What's up?
Ballot, six thirty. I'm talking about the current river ballot. Order, request for votes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, in whose soul the religion of this world.
Uh, you can just move with the current agenda.
I don't have any changes.
The motion to approve the...
I move the board approve consent agenda as presented.
Second. Board has moved and seconded discussion. All favor, five.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes. Five personnel. Set reservation for Storman Assistant Baseball Coach.
I move the board to set a reservation for Storman Assistant Baseball Coach. Second.
You approve the seconded. Any discussion?
Take your reading.
If I want to spend more time with this, I should be on the next, next page.
Go ahead.
Why don't you give the reading together, right?
Here's the...
Seconded. Discussion. If you vote for vote, all favor.
Aye.
And any votes? Uh, now be approve hire Chris Storman Assistant Baseball Coach.
I move the board approve the hire of Chris Storman Assistant Baseball Coach. Second.
You approve the seconded. Any discussion?
So this would be the other part of the...
And freshman will be...
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion passes. Uh, six public comment. And we have nine. Vote seven, unfinished business, group board policies.
I move the board approve following policies. Twenty-one, zero-seven, twenty-one, forty, twenty-one, forty-five, twenty-one, fifty, twenty-one, fifty-one, twenty-four, ten, thirty-one, fifteen, thirty-two, oh-seven, thirty-two, ten, thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty-two, forty-one, thirty-four, seventeen, and fifty-two, eighty-one.
I'll second that. You approve the seconded. Any section, any discussion? Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Motion passes. I made new business group overnight state for winter athletic competition.
I move the board approve overnight state for winter athletic competition.
I'll second. You approve the seconded question? Is this the basketball?
Yes, girl basketball.
Uh, so they got to play in Toplidge, exactly?
Yeah, come on Sunnyside, basically. They're playing against Sunnyside at Sunnyside. As we're seating, seating position.
Any other discussion?
I think that this is what I was referring to. I believe last meeting, our district five blew in two district four. Therefore, our fourth place team has to go over and play their first place team at their home site. So, um, it's kind of one of those things. Next year it won't happen because district five will have two state births. And when they have two state births, they are not allowed to glue into another district. Only when they have just one state birth, they're allowed to glue in.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Motion passes. Okay, may be select action plan to read the board questions.
I'd like to just briefly go over this information. As you're aware, we received a grant from the Temple Foundation to upgrade our reader board panel. Um, the grant we asked for was thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars, which was the amount that we received. And we have three possible options in dealing with a sign company that we could go through. Um, first one is amount of the reader board plus tax. We use that option, the company will actually ship the reader board here. The expectation with that bit would be that we install and fit the reader board into its housing essentially. And then once that is done, they will come out and set up with, help set up with software and training. And the final hook everything will be out there. Uh, a second option, number two, would be to have the reader board shipped here. We bring it up there, they do all the adjusting, maybe retrofitting essentially onsite. And we still would install it and it would help with software programming. The third option, which is the one I'm promoting, is that the board or the panel is actually shipped to the, to the vendor. They do all the work, they bring it out here, they install it, adjust it due to onsite training here. Also with this, um, this particular aspect, we include additional light panel at the top of the reader board. So who we need to decide is, um, what option the board would like us to pursue.
Option three, um, are, is the provider, I guess, for lack of a better word. Are they going to sort of follow up after it's installed or will they disappear?
No, they'll, they'll help with tech support if there's any needs or if things aren't moving properly after the initial installation.
What about option two?
They're still going to be on the look for, you know, services and help. The real difference is with option three, they're the ones solely doing the mounting and installation. If we go with one, it's, you know, basically Randy and a tractor and a couple of other hands get the board up in place. You know, Randy's willing to do that. I would be there because if I was Randy, I would want to, you know, have a channel in my hands, you know, putting it into its swath. But, um, it is the least expensive option. Temple is, you know, funding the bulk of the reader board, so, um, you know, any of these aren't an upgrade over what we have currently, not looking at all of them. So, I, I would like to skip over option three, but, you know, we discussed whether this would even come before the board because the total cost of the district is under ten thousand. But as far as the actual money going out will be over ten thousand, but Temple is funding the bulk of it, so. The stuff, the clearest thing to do would be to grant it to the board and discuss the options and put a plan in place.
So what, can you describe what the lighting at the top of the reader board, what is that about? What, what is that going to, is just going to light the area around and what's the purpose of that?
Yeah, it's kind of like recess lighting, you know, I have maybe a kitchen or a trap bar. So it's going to put a lot, make it brighter. That's included in the rest, that's not an additional, that's part of the option three.
Only option three, that's not part of the others?
Right.
So what type of work piece do we get with the...
Well, I don't have that information in front of me, but...
A year or three months or...
I don't know. Let's go tomorrow.
This is obviously an upgrade compared to what we have.
Yeah, it has stability for bigger letters, more lines. It has ability to do motion and shading. It's a monochrome board, it's not multiple colors, but you can do computer letter with like grayscale on portable editing.
Is it going to be like the fact that you have to drive back and forth three or four times nervous or...
Oh, that's the point of the big letters and they have a light water. And it's not red because red is harder to see than white. And the handers.
I've, I've got a question about the fact that this is being brought to the board for a motion. And it relates to your authority as far as, I mean, according to policy, it's ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Doesn't require board approval. You know, the, the grant, uh, is something that we were all aware of. While we haven't discussed it, I know we're many being opposed to the concept, which conveys to me that there's, you know, board acknowledgement of wanting to see this done. Which then, to me then, reduces the cost of this from sixteen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars to less than really three thousand dollars of authorization for you to do the work. So, um, with that said, I'm just wondering, you know, are we really, um, are, are you just doing this as a courtesy to the board? I mean, it's great for the community to know what we're doing. I, I think that aspect is awesome for them to know that we're doing these things and, you know, if next year it gets in the paper. But, uh, but I also want to make sure that, uh, you're, you're not being overburdened with having to bring things to the board that maybe don't really require board approval. So I, I'd just be curious what the board thinks about that. If, you know, my, my, my preference would be, you know, looking at those three options would be to just say, at least they give the superintendent, make the best decision and we'll back you up. But, um, if, if the board feels that, you know, you want to weigh in and want to make a motion and select the choice, then, you know, that's the board's choice.
That was my thinking and the safest way for me is to bring it to the board out where there's no discussion about should she, shouldn't she just...
I like option three. For me, it just makes sense to have them handle it, install it, get it up and running, train the people that they need to here to get it going rather than starting off sort of trying to test. And possibly mishandle it, installing it and, I don't know, it just seems to make sense to have them do it. That's what they do, correct? Well, if you'd like to take it to a vote, I guess we can, but...
Well, that was my question. I, I'm just, you know...
It's an agenda item, so we have to do something with it. You know, we can just say, sure, whatever, option three, what do you think? Just my, since it is on the agenda rather than trying to back up and take it off, you know.
Does it hurt anything to follow through with the...
No.
I think it's good that it's brought to the board just because it makes awareness of what's happening in the community. Temple is a, kind of a big part of our community and I think that needs to be brought over. For that, for you to involve, I think it's good.
I mean, it's perfectly within, uh, you know, your responsibility. It's within parameters that the board has laid out for you to spend that much money, so, but I, I think I appreciate that it's up to the information though. Rather than it just showing up and then we get a call from someone saying, what, moral? How much did that cost? You know? I'd say option three, take it to a vote, move on. That's my two cents.
Is that your motion? Uh, I move the board approve option three, uh, for replacement of the existing reader board.
Second.
You approve the seconded. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Motion passes. New business C, remember group request for trip to Silverwood theme park. I don't know what I said.
I move the board approve for a trip to Silverwood theme park.
I'll second that.
We have presentation, should have. He told me a couple of hours ago, he had a presentation.
Can you do a presentation in my event?
What?
Have you been doing a presentation in the first?
Hair and socks on. What can you do? Okay. Okay. I'm going to see who we really said, huh?
Um, yes. Well, um, the new summer band is requesting permission for a four day, um, three nights. Uh, in May, the memorial day weekend, twenty-first through twenty-fourth, to Silverwood theme park and Blower Park in Idaho. Um, we'll be playing there on, uh, the Friday, I think. Yes, we perform Friday and then spend Saturday just kind of, you know, enjoying the park and then Sunday we come home. Um, we dragged out all our costs and everything for you and, yeah. This is our total is three thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, twenty cents. Um, yeah, that's, that's what we're planning on doing is hoping to board approve, so, thank you.
Questioning.
Questions.
Yeah, so, so has, has the, uh, has the group made the money for this or...
Yes, we, we currently have, I believe, about four thousand, five thousand dollars of our account currently. So it would, it would be perfectly fine, some money will go over itself.
So is this money made by the band actually playing or is it money you guys have?
Same, I don't...
So do you play one night or play all days?
We would play, we would play just, um, Friday. We would, we would head up there Thursday, play Friday, um, enjoy the park Saturday and then help out Sunday.
How many of you have been, the story have you been to Silverwood?
Um, I don't really know, I've never been, so it'll be a new experience for me. I went to Disneyland with the Merck Band three years ago, so...
It's a pretty neat little theme park out there, basically, no worries.
Yes.
And the, the new roller coaster hurt me, so.
Alright.
It won't hurt you, you know? It's, uh, it's pretty, yeah, it's a lot of fun. You got a lot of little skits and things going on there and stuff, so it's pretty fun.
How much is that worth paying you guys to play at the zoo or are you getting money for the skate? No.
No, it's just, we go up there and play and they give us a discount, um, for being part of a group, so we get a discount on the passes and stuff.
I would just like to add that, you know, another thing that really wasn't mentioned is these kids have given up a lot of personal sacrifices of their own time, many Saturdays to play at fairs, events, rest homes, everywhere. So, um, well, they look like an expensive trip, but when you factor in the money that they earned and the personal sacrifice they made, it's really not that much.
So just the students that are named their own sacrifices?
Yeah. There's eight of us, it's a counting of middle schoolers.
I'm sorry, what was the number?
The eight.
Eight.
Eight students.
So can you carry all that in one van then or do you have to take another?
We're taking a van and, yeah.
Van and the trailer.
Yeah, we, we take the Merck Band trailer and then, um, to me, if my mother was considering to shop around, then I would just ride with her so we wouldn't have to take two vans.
Which is a little preventative.
Thank you for your impromptu presentation.
Yeah, very well.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Motion passes.
Um, Karen, supervisor of being somebody who's going to break it over a couple of points that she wanted to share. As part of ESD, one class co-op was did apply for a, it's called N Power. Was to encourage girls, middle school and high school to be involved in STEM, science, technology, engineering, the math careers. Uh, we've been notified that we're moving on to the second round of that, one of fourteen schools to make the next round. It's a three-year program and we love a lot of summer opportunities for students to deal with the, all these initials here. If Nick were here, he'd be happy to explain this. It's common core, science standards and math. And then the NGSS is the next generation science standard. So we've heard a lot about common core and new science standards. So this grant would help work on those and it's a three-year grant, so, um, we're told our chances look pretty good. So just kind of where to report on what's going on there. Many of these folks are in the audience, they are heading to state March fourteenth in Arlington. This is their second consecutive year of coming to state. So, I think, yeah, most of them are here. So I want to wish them luck and we'll probably have some kind of something at our March meeting. So what kind of hard work are they doing, I want to wish them good luck and back to back, it's pretty impressive. Um, wish them luck.
Yeah, well, on the left you can see one of our graduates, uh, his first name is Justin. Anyway, he was pretty proud of you with his miss all-time for about twenty-two months and way behind on the credits when he got there and worked real hard, they didn't let him work. Just rounded away and got his, got his diploma. He had his GED as well, that was kind of like, you know, his backup by any moment to have his bases covered, but he didn't give up on the diploma, he kept at it. And we were able to, um, graduate him right before, uh, before he went to boot camp. And Mr. Nelson was able to come back this year as a principal, so it was pretty kind of a little homecoming. So that was, that was nice. As far as the GEDs go, just by the way, a little information, they changed it down online, test now. So, um, they've changed up for the guys, it used to be a paper answer test and now it's all, all online. And since we switched last May, we have had twenty-five, you take that test, ten of them will pass all four sections, which is actually really good. Now, what happens with the GED is most of them will pass like three out of four. And so if you pass three out of four, it's only the section that you don't pass that you have to retake. So even if they, I mean, tests are right before they leave, leave us, I don't want them to check out on school, a lot of, you know, kind of what they think they have a GED, they don't think they're only graduated. So we don't want them to do it until they're ready to leave. But when they get on the group home or whatever, all they need to do is retake the math or the science or whichever section they didn't pass. Um, if they didn't pass, but ten of them are qualified to pass all four first try, so. That's, uh, that was good. And then, um, our basketball team, if you look at the lower right picture, we actually have Panthers, they sell Panthers basketball team, it's been, I think decades since they've had a basketball team. And, uh, Mr. Doe, he kind of always talked about it with a wistful look at his eye, wouldn't it be great to have a basketball team? It's how do you make that happen, you know, with coaches and everything? Mr. Bo and, uh, A.J. Smith, our history teacher, that lesson, they took it upon themselves to do this for the kids on their own time. I mean, yesterday, for instance, they went all the way, or not yesterday, because you like, we've been one of those three day weekends. But Friday, they took off the Echo Plan. And now this is a long drive. If you've never been to Echo Plan, you take eighteen where it connects with Nike. And then you go onto the freeway at Nike, then you go through the woods for about a mile and you're at Echo Plan, a lot of traffic. They left in the morning and didn't get back till ten thirty Friday night. And this is how they spend their Friday, you know, on Valentine's weekend. And this is all on their own time volunteering to help these guys. So I have to be commended. And we had a couple of volunteers go along, Dr. Wheel, uh, did scorekeeping, she's our librarian at camp. And, uh, Deidre Baker, our English teacher, went along, just kind of grew them on. I just think that's awesome to have people volunteer their time to help these guys because they're, uh, they're part of the job, that's the volunteer, that's pretty impressive, uh, to me. So those kind of dudes are my heart, I really appreciate the work they're doing. Mr. Smith, they've had four games, they play alumni, just people around that, you know, it's kind of hard to get a team, school team to come play here, come on this year. So they haven't had a whole lot of, a whole lot of people lined up to play them, but they, but, yeah, the Echo Plan game was great and they won that one. And there's a game tonight, so all people are getting out of here going over and watching them play tonight, but it's a good, you know, most of these kids didn't have dads. And so A.J. loves the role of coach, you know? I mean, it's kind of like, when you're a little bit loud, you're, there was a kid walking across the library, he was talking too loud in the library one day. A.J., that's Mr. Smith, he, he just says the kid's name, kind of like, hey, you know, he just thought they, you know, there was a chain on the kid and that's kind of like, boom, you know, there's a relationship there and respect. Those guys have a cat, they don't give them a lot of room, I mean, if they get in trouble twice, they're off the team. And so there's a, I guess it's a stick, you know, etiquette. And, uh, they want to be on that team and they were, they only had ten kids, so. And I kind of, hearing the crowd, well, Mr. Smith says he noticed when we have awards, it's simply the kids on the team are so focused to stay on the team that they're getting more awards, you know, and recognition for their behavior in the class, too. So that's brilliant. And, uh, there you have, there is important stuff. We have education portal, which is the online classes that the kids are doing. And we have a kid just started today, um, in Spanish, he wanted to learn Spanish. So keep working on that. Last thing, we're at our super president meeting today. The superintendent of the camp said there was a J.R. required cut, they just announced today, twenty-three bed reduction. So over, you know, over retail Echo Plan and they sell those twenty-three beds, um, along with a, with another program to cut. So what that means, they sell these four, four beds, so they were funded at eighty and now they'll be funded at seventy-six. Uh, what it means to Echo Plan, they had six beds cut, green hell eight, and then this foster care program had five. Group homes didn't have any kind of, but that was kind of interesting. Um, it was surprising, it's not been a hundred and forty-six thousand, they have a new cut to the NISO U Camp. So they had two funded positions, they had that vacate. But rather than have to fire people, they kind of saw it coming and they did, they didn't hire those positions, they had some people leave and retire, so they didn't, didn't hire them. So nobody lost their job, they just didn't hire positions they would have, so. But more or less, more or less people being, A.S.L., what that probably means is come April fifteenth, when we get our funding letter, will probably be, this year we're funding seventy-six. It would make sense that it would be seventy-two, maybe less, we don't know, we'll kind of, we can see on that. The thing that could change that is they're talking about, the present governor's budget has a line item to close, uh, to, um, boot camp in Cornell. And that's a kick, it's going to be the end of the kid, so kind of, it's a juggle, it's kind of keep it posted, because that's what's going on. Question?
Budget. So this is for January, very good, we have a few more audience members, probably keep this a little bit. Uh, budget information slides a month, so when we report out on budget, we report from the previous month. So we ended January at seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight fourteen, which is in town, we will start February. Last month in January was our, our true and up, so to speak. Previous month at all budgeted were our built on, uh, yes, yes budget and on January on then we're gate on actual. So that is why you'll see a little difference here, our portionment for the first two months was exactly the same. Because that was, that's built on what we told O.S.P.I. we would have. And November, you get half of that amount, so this is...
You know, February you get half of that amount, so this amount right here is half of this. And then December you get the full amount again. And now January is based on actual number of students. We have more in reality than we said we would. So that's why you see a little difference there. But from the math part. enrollment patterns, you can see a bill very steady the whole time we've been in school, November. Either highest market. Well, we're losing one place and tend to have gained another. Only thing that's really dropped across the board is boot camp, that's only makes seven. So like Alan was saying, you wouldn't be surprised if, um, boot camp gives us the, it's funding commitment letter that it's going to look less, most likely than seventy-six, which is what we really guaranteed this year. We're not averaging seventy-six students. And you heard the report that JRA is down as a whole, so it'll be another one of those situations where we're going after them, trying to get the money that they promised us through, you know, funding and staff and stuff. More to come on that. And years past, we've received the money, but it took many letters and, and months of waiting. See that one comes up, yes?
Listen, you see a, um, reduction in staff?
Yes. Unless, like Alan was saying, unless the boot camp closes somewhere else and comes to us, we'll have reductions.
In the teaching staff?
Across the board. Hopefully it comes through, our normal attrition core doesn't happen. But if, if there are no retirements, then we get a number of seventy-two or one. Okay, the next one, um, a levy isn't yet certified, but it's pretty solid. There will be one more count on the twenty-fourth, um, based on past history. It's very white, these numbers are going to show a big, big movement. Um, just, I'll give you a little breakdown. Um, right now it's passing at about seventy-three percent in Pacific County and fifty-seven percent in Lakewood. I have a composite of the two counties. This is off of Lakewood's page, actually, you can see that very well. Um, it's very, uh, overall, there were seven hundred and twenty-five votes in the two counties. Um, combined yes votes was four eighty-eight and combined no votes was two thirty-seven. So the overall passing was sixteen, seven point forty-one. You can see that very well. A little bit farther breakdown on this chart here. This is, um, historical of what's posted on the Pacific and Lakewood counties' websites. It's, um, from two thousand six to two thousand fifteen. Now you'll notice at the bottom, this, you know, counting by ten, it's two thousand six, two thousand eight, two thousand ten. In those years, we ran two-year levies and this year was a three-year, so that's, that's why it maybe looks out of sequence. Um, top is Pacific County's yes votes and the bottom is Lakewood County yes votes. And just interesting perspective on the past several years. Um, a couple of things we could report out, I mentioned last month. We have been trying to get some bids for the garage doors. We did actually have another bid come in, our bids, we have two bids at this time, we made from thirty thousand to forty-four thousand. I don't know, various is, they're odd-sized doors, so we'll have to have special framing to fit in kind of, kind of doors. So that's what we have so far. Um, I don't know if we're going to get every bid in at this point or not. It's been three or four months since we've asked for other bids. But one bid just come in, so there is hope that we may get another, another bid or two. We also have a person coming tomorrow, um, to give us a, a bid on what it might cost to put a drop-down dividing curtain in our gym, so we can separate our kids and have different activities. There is a challenge with the shape of the roofline because it's, has a pretty significant curve to it. You know, to get a camp or, to get a curtain to expand far enough so it's not just, you know, a little curtain in the middle with the sides wide open. It has to be pretty low on the roofline and, as you know, we have a leachure right there on people's heads nearby. So we just want to see what options might exist for dividing that, if it's possible, if that might look like, what it might cost, and we start the process. It's, it's all just conversation at this point. We don't know if we'll even do it or if it's even feasible, but, um, just kind of let everyone know. There's some things that we're looking at. I reported out on the seventh serving grant last night through OSBI. Um, a good bulk of that is done. It has to be done by April and I'm sure it will be done, they're on target. Uh, I enjoy working with ESD because they keep us apprised of anything new coming out of the legislature. And it does look like that we may get some additional student score footage allocation. That's SSAA. They base that on your October enrollment, but it's looking like that may go up. So it's possible we could have another eleven thousand square feet allocated. So that would be good. Um, the other thing we talked about is, there's a bill in the legislature right now. It has to do with bond construction. And it hasn't passed, but it's, it's gaining some traction, as they say. And that would be that if a school district runs a bond measure or building improvement in November at the general election, the proposal is that if you do it on that timeline, if the general election, that you could, if you get a simple majority, that would be sufficient. So it would basically be like the levies are done. But you have to do it in November at the general election. And the theory there is you have a larger voter turnout. So theoretically, that voting contingent would be representative of the population in large. So it hasn't passed yet, but, um, it, it's on repeat updates, so it's still, it's still an active bill. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, what comes out with that. Chuck and Val and I have a meeting with the manager of the work group. We've had two meetings so far and we plan to bring a recommendation at the March board meeting. We wanted to make sure Chuck was back, he's gone right now. So be something coming in March with that. Uh, last Monday, I attended the Coastal Athletic One-Bean League competition. This meeting was set by the superintendent of Quinault. And we've heard different talks at various board meetings, there've been articles in the paper that, and I'll show you a little news clip here, which I think will help better explain this. You know, last year, um, schools started pulling out of that one-bean league. They didn't want to play against Tahola, they felt unsafe, there were things that happened there. And the only way that those teams felt they could control their own destiny was to break away from that league. Subsequently then, the Quinault Nation, not the Tahola school district, but the Quinault Nation, which has a large representation up there, filed a lawsuit against these school districts saying that, you know, their Tahola students were being discriminated against. And I will show you a couple of slides in this video, it'll probably make more sense when we see this, but. The purpose of that meeting was to try to get these teams who have pulled away from the league to resume competition. Now, Mesa is not in that league, but we have played those schools in the past. And we did play those schools this year. So it was said at one time that, you know, we're part of this lawsuit. We are not part of the lawsuit. We have played against those teams and we did play them this year, as you guys out here. No. So really the goal of the meeting was to try to get the teams to start playing each other again. The ultimate goal of the twenty-sixteen-seventeen school year is to reform that coastal league. Now, the reason it's twenty-sixteen-seventeen is that's what coincides with WIAA's cycle. You know, on a two-year cycle for reformation, so, you know. Those are the desired outcomes. We were invited, I guess, you know, former participants, and to just, you know, get educated and see if you want to schedule games with those teams. And it was a good meeting, I'm glad to be there. Tahola was there and they have a new suit and a new AV and they vowed to, you know, make things different. They seem very sincere about it. So we'll see what happens. I wanted to show you this news clip I, I found that they could, um, set the table a lot better in this explanation. And I don't know what kind of ad is going to be on it, but I know we get one, sorry. Notice when.
At Enterprise, we not only break great cars, we sell them too.
We order a lowest price on every car.
Well, even buy it back if you're unhappy for any reason.
Well, I, you know, I did it at home, I had different ads on, I was almost in charge on this detail.
I think those sports seasons are often filled with unexpected twists and turns, but they don't often include federal lawsuits. As Kipon John Lider reports, one local school claims its schedule was ruined because of racial discrimination.
This is where the gentleman's shift was wanted to be all along. Last night's district four beat title game in Lacy, a game they won, a game they almost were in. How can you do this? Jerry Walter is interim athletic director and girls' basketball coach.
He's following.
This is, where we showing our kids. Walter's teams started the year in the Coastal Conference with the Lake Wenawol, Mary Anne Knight, North River, and Wishka Valley school districts. Around football season, they tried to kick Tahola out, citing safety and sportsmanship issues. Tahola appealed to the state and won, but that did end the issue.
Because on December twenty-first, the other four schools decided to do something different. They disbanded the conference, effectively giving Tahola no one to play.
Half the season was wiped out, the basketball teams didn't play for a month.
Now, they're saying it's time to resolve it.
The move also makes it hard for Tahola to play anyone else. The only schools nearby are the ones that end in the league, fought sharpest president of the Quinault Indian Nation.
And there's no explanation as to why such severe sanctions and penalties were leveled against them.
Last week, the Quinault's suit claiming the district's motivation was racial discrimination. The lawsuit calls harassment against Tahola students, quote, "severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive."
It's been going on far too long, uh, we have to draw the line, support our students.
Lake Wenawol superintendent Rich Dubois is a defendant. He could not specify the safety and sportsmanship issues, but told K-5, "We had concerns that weren't being addressed." Meanwhile, Tahola boys and girls' basketball teams can still play in the playoffs and they're both heading to state. They'll battle on the court, the adults will battle in a courtroom. Into full edge, John Lider, K-5 news.
So that was a year ago, that isn't the recent turn in that we're talking about. Those lawsuits have not yet been settled. So really the point of the meeting, which was called by Quinault, one of the people deemed, one of the districts being suit of us to say, can we, you know, let the courts handle the lawsuit and resume competition? So put together this little diagram, the one B was the former league and it had these six teams in it. Okay? So when the teams started pulling out and saying, "We don't want to play Tahola anymore", the Quinault Nation actually filed a lawsuit on behalf of Tahola students. The Tahola school district did not file the lawsuit, but it was the Quinault Nation and it filed a lawsuit on the following districts, so Wishka Valley, Quinault, Mary Anne Knight, and North River. Well, the North River lawsuit is subsequently settled. But there is still a lawsuit of the Quinault tribe versus the Quinault school district, Wishka Valley, and Mary Anne Knight. So that's the history of that. But, but for us, as Mesa, this has to be signed, you know, do we want to have a league next year? Would it be this coastal league? Would it be a league, you know, up towards, uh, Kelsa Longview or several one-bean schools up there? Or do we remain independent? So yet all to be determined. That kind of hopefully helped explain how we got in this situation. Any questions? Anyone? That's it for me?
Kat, do you have a question about the manager of the work group?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there any chance those, the, the one that can, could maybe get a overview of discussion?
Sure.
On to eleven, department reports and future agenda. Can I, I see, at least I see the reader board there, so.
I wasn't sure.
Were, were you expecting me to say something?
No, that's my hyperlink, I just left it there in case. I was gonna.
I've got to do some survey.
If, those things don't cooperate with me very well, so I just thought I'd keep it there, just in case.
Okay, I, I plan, I do plan to, to go out and do some layout, uh, hopefully on a nice day. And, uh, just use some pins with string to, and then maybe use some ribbon to differentiate the different layers. Uh, and my thought process there is to provide something maybe on perspective of new that I can then share with Greg Nelson, who could maybe with CAD, develop that in the drawing. So that's kind of where that's at.
Oh, what part, emotional part of it?
I moved to more adjourned meeting.
Second. Student second, all papers at?
Aye.
All, please, are, all opposed? Both passed. Meeting's adjourned.